I am calling to order the meeting of the Fairview City Council for May 1st, 2013. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Prom.
Here.
Counselor Kremeyer.
Here.
Counselor Owen.
Here.
Counselor Barton Mullins.
Here.
Counselor Quimby.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Weatherby.
Here. Would you all rise while I lead you in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and what I would like to do again is to ask that there be all electronic devices be turned off. I know that it's always tempting to tell somebody that you like long walks on the ocean shore and that you miss them terribly, but, you know, we just hold off for tonight.
Of course, Mr. Mayor, the last time an electronic device went off during a council meeting, I believe it was yours.
Yeah, okay. That is, yeah, and I really learned about that.
Just to set the record.
Yeah, true. Okay, so, yeah, it's very good. Next thing is consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor seeing to five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is passed unanimously. We have citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here? Okay, seeing none. Next is City Administrator and Director Reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilors. I have a few updates for you and as well as for the audience out there. Budget was approved by the Budget Committee, so we're very excited about that. It is currently available online, so if anyone wanted to view it, please feel free. If you have questions, don't hesitate to contact myself or the Finance Director at City Hall. We'll be happy to assist you in any way we can. Copies are also available for viewing at City Hall downstairs in the Finance Administration Office as well. And just a reminder that this is scheduled to come to council on June 5th for review and consideration for adoption, as well as a public hearing from the public. So if anyone had anything they wanted to say, that would be the time. The other updates I have for you include the city newsletter. Monthly newsletter went out in the utility bills today, so you should be seeing that this week. And there is the coupon for yard debris cleanup is included in this newsletter. Just clip it out and follow the instructions on it. But for those of you who, for whatever reason, misplaced this or don't have it, please feel free to get ahold of Linda Wood at City Hall, and she'll be happy to make sure you get one. So, we did want to make people aware of that. The other big news we have, our city staff is pursuing several surveys that will be going out to citizens as well. The first one is going in the utility bill this month as well, and it is a creation from the Visioning Committee, so we do ask citizens to please take the time to fill this out for us. It is in your utility bill. It's also available on the city website. We have hard copies in City Hall, so please take the time to do this for us. This is part of the Visioning Committee in regards to the amenities desired in Fairview. There's also a park survey going out. One of the projects, key projects, we have scheduled for the next fiscal year that we are beginning right now is the redevelopment of Park Cleon. And we're really looking for input from citizens who live in that area in regards to that park, or any other citizen in the community who frequents it and would like to share some thoughts on that. So, please look for that as well. It'll be delivered to those homeowners in that area, as well as on the city website. And finally, on Monday, May 27th, a reminder that City Hall will be closed in observance of Memorial Day, so we will not be here that day, but we'll certainly return on the 28th. And I will be happy to entertain any questions anybody has for me.
Anyone? Okay, I've seen all the lights.
Okay, and I believe the directors have reports as well.
Mayor Weatherby, Councilors, good evening. I just want to provide you with notification that, beginning with the next council packet, we will be providing a budget report, so that you can all more closely monitor our expenditures and where we are throughout the year. That will be coming to you on the second meeting, the packet for the second meeting. So, and please feel free, as soon as you get it and review it, to give me a call, and we can research any questions you might have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, and then Chief Johnson has a brief report, and Allen Berry does not have anything, but if you have questions for him, he's certainly available.
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you on behalf of the Fairview Police Department. As you all know, National Police Week is quickly approaching in the next couple of weeks, May 15th, National Police Memorial Day. And as we reflect, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us for the progress during the Budget Committee meeting. We're very grateful for our ability to continue to do our very best to keep this community safe. On May 7th, I will have the great privilege of presenting three with the Governor's Office, three medals of ultimate sacrifice. If you're not aware, for the television audience, I have the honor of being the Chair for the Governor's Commission for the Law Enforcement Medal of Honor. And last session, we created a new award called the Medal of Ultimate Sacrifice, and it is given to families of those who have been left behind. Sadly, we have three families since this bill was passed that have been left behind due to officers being killed in the line of duty. May 7th, which happens to be my dad's birthday, we will be honoring those families during the law enforcement memorial ceremony at the Academy. So, please be thinking about us. It's gonna be a tough day for me. I'm sure it's gonna be a tough day for Chief Painter's family and the others that I've grown close to over the last few years through this process. So, please be thinking about us and remembering Law Enforcement Memorial Week and Law Enforcement Memorial Day. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And Counselor Barton Mullins?
I have just a quick question. I've noticed that we have the equipment now to, I don't know what it's called, when you go down the street and it tells you how fast you're going.
The speed radar, radar trailer.
Yeah, last I knew, it was stolen. Did we get it back, or did we have to buy a new?
No, we, that was replaced with insurance.
You never got it?
So CIS or whatever, it's been scrapped.
That's...
And unfortunately, we went through, it's been almost a year. It arrived damaged, the replacement trailer, and we've been fighting with the company, Steve Richards from Public Works and I. It was, you know, paint was down to the, it was scraped down to the metal. It was rusting, there were a lot of mechanical issues with it. It's turned off on occasion now as operating, but it is out and about. It was replaced with insurance money. I think we had to come up with a deductible, and I believe that was covered as well.
It's good to see it back.
So, and we move it around based on requests from the public, and we have a rotating schedule that we move it around. Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could make one additional comment. The youth in our audience is from Reynolds. They are part of a government class, and they are here to observe us, so if you see them taking notes during the meeting, it's part of their class requirement. Just wanted to let you know.
I'm sure they'd make it to be far more profound. Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it. Mayor, committee reports, and Counselor Prom. That was quick. I don't really have anything, except that I was very happy that the budget was passed in two nights instead of going to third night. I also have a comment that I have. Several of my patients have commented to me that they're very excited and happy that the farmer's market is back on Village Street. That's all I have. Okay, Counselor Kremeyer?
Well, I can feel and hear that the new HVAC system is working, so that's good to hear and feel this evening, so. The only other thing that I have is, I just had a question for Allen regarding the work going on over at the post office, if we have an estimated completion date for that. I was just curious.
It should have been very quick, and they found a giant boulder, and Henry's pushing it as fast as he can. I would expect, I'm speaking for Henry, but I would expect it to be done by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I could just hear that, I could hear in my office that they found probably a couple of large boulders with the jackhammer they had going on over there.
...in the middle of the street doing a catchphrase in the hotel.
Yeah, there was more than a couple of boulders. Yeah, believe me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Owen?
Yeah, nothing this evening.
Okay, Counselor Barton Mullins?
I have nothing this evening.
Counselor Owen, or Counselor, Counselor Quimby?
Thank you. Just one item. Two weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee met again.
Two weeks ago, the Parks and Recreation Committee met again. We did a tour of some of the parks. Counselor Owen joined us. The main idea was to see Imagination Station at Reynolds High School, because there was a survey done of the citizens in 1995 and again in 2001 that requested something similar to be built in Fairview when we could. So that was just part of the background, and then we visited Park Cleon and Lake Shore Park. I think everybody is aware that the Parks Committee was turned into an ad hoc situation where they scrapped the monthly meetings as of last July due to the staff cuts in Community Development Department. So, it didn't come as too big a surprise that the minutes hadn't been completed. The minutes from the four meetings that did occur in 2012 were approved at the last meeting. And so I had a chance to review those, and basically, it's because I've been trying to get up to speed as the new council liaison to the committee and see what's been going on and where we're headed. Something that did excite me was in the minutes from January 12th of 2012, under Parks' Master Plan Discussion, the statement was written in the minutes that the mayor would like to see Park Cleon as the next park for upgrades and improvements. And I would certainly agree with that. What I also found was a Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan update from May of 2001. And I haven't read through all that, it's pretty sophisticated and pretty thick, but a product of that is the City of Fairview Recreation Master Plan dated August 2002. And some interesting things came to light. I was not able to discuss appropriately last month, but I've got some highlights from that that I'd just like to read real quick as a background to show where we're going with the park equipment in Cleon at this time. The playground equipment was removed last July due to being dilapidated beyond repair. And I was contacted last fall by a citizen, and then talked to more citizens in the neighborhood when I was campaigning last fall, and they were concerned about that. So just real quickly, at the beginning of this Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we have an executive summary, says it draws on priorities identified and analysis performed during the creation of the Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan adopted in 2001. Extensive research, a comprehensive recreation survey, and a community meeting focused on the city's new community center was also informed in this plan. Another thing in the executive summary says this plan also recognizes the need to seek out new recreational opportunities, and one of those things was a large-scale play structure. In, I believe it was 2001, when we were doing council goal setting, I pushed for a goal to be that I wanted to see more recreation in our parks and recreation. So, going back to the plan that was adopted in August of 2002, and there was a question as to whether or not it was properly adopted, Heather Martin, our city attorney, addressed that, and it was properly ratified by the City Council in August of 2002. Under a section titled Need for a Larger Play Structure, in 1995, the Parks and Recreation Survey identified the need for a play structure as a top priority for community parks. Survey respondents in the creation surveys conducted in 2001 also indicated the need for a play structure. Particularly, they identified a large-scale play structure as a need. Nearly half of the survey respondents said they had visited Imagination Station in Troutdale, and they wanted something like that here. This plan recommends developing a larger-scale play structure that might serve the city. Under a section for potential improvements to Park Cleon, it also indicates that this site could support a larger play structure. It continues on to say an expanded Park Cleon may offer the best site for a major play Says Park Cleon represents the most centrally-located site for a major play structure. Later in the book, it says this recreation plan identifies the need to create a major play structure larger than those currently constructed. Park Cleon may serve as a prime location for a significant play structure costing in the range of $100,000. That was $2,002. So, I guess my point here is that we adopted this, and the minutes indicate that when we adopted this, we said do this as the money becomes available. In the current year budget, we have approximately $250,000 that didn't get spent on Park Cleon. We removed equipment, but it hasn't been replaced yet. In the budget that we just adopted as a budget committee, it jumps up to almost $300,000. Two surveys of the people, a master plan, a recreation master plan, 11 years, $250,000, and we haven't done anything. And so, that's why a month ago, I was pushing, we need to get this done. Summer's coming, the money's there, council directed staff to spend the money, the people said this is what we want, and nothing's happened. So, we are once again, as a Parks and Recreation Committee, doing a small survey, talking about the priorities. During the course of the summer and maybe this fall, there will be a complete master plan upgrade for Park Cleon, possibly some equipment for Lake Shore Park. But, once again, I just want to reiterate that getting some playground equipment in Park Cleon is a high priority for the summer. And the longer we mess around with this, the longer it's gonna take to get this stuff done. Everything is in place, but nothing's happened. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right. Next, Counselor Arrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Mayor's Business Roundtable, which was a great meeting for local business owners to network and find out what's happening from an economic perspective in our community. This quarter, we had a guest speaker, Joanna Valencia, who's the Senior Transportation Planner with Monmouth County, and she shared with us the county's transportation's most notable improvement plan for the main arterials, which was leading to Highway 26. It was very informative. I also attended the Four Cities User Board. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum. However, the fire chief did give us an overview of the budget, and I thought that I would just share with our viewing audience and the council a few of those highlights. It's exciting. The City of Gresham is purchasing three new fire trucks for $1.69 million. They're gonna be about six to seven months out. They also have purchasing some smartphones and iPads, upgrading some of their cell services. And they currently have two trucks on loan from Portland that they're going to be not using any longer and replacing with the new trucks that they're purchasing. So that was kind of exciting. Let's see, the other big thing is they implemented, as probably a lot of people have seen in Outlook, a police and fire park fee, and with that, they are funding two deputy fire marshals. So that's great. And let's see, what else do I have for you? Oh, I attended the Arts and Community Events Committee meeting. It was their first meeting. The city attorney, Heather Martin, was there, and she updated the group on their duties with regard to public meetings and ethics and rules for public officials. While discussing the group's duties, several areas of needed clarification became apparent, and the group asked that I seek clarification from the council on the following items. First one, there is no reference in the charter to the word advisory with regard to committee, and so they wanted clarification on what specifically their rules were in the advisory capacity. The term led the group to believe that their main function is to advise the council, and so as an example, they said, should we be looking at fee waivers and endorsements? Should this be the group that be doing that? Should this group make recommendations to the council or the city manager with regards to fee waivers and endorsements? And/or, should this group's main focus be on implementation of council-directed events? Does this group have the freedom to create and implement events as they can create or solicit revenues sources on their own? So again, that was another question that they had to us. The second concern that they had was with regard to the membership section. It says wherever possible persons will be appointed who have demonstrated interest, experience, and expertise in the area, and at least two members shall have professional arts backgrounds. And they were wondering if that is in fact inhibiting their ability to appoint members because of that clause. So, again, I would make that a question, you know, is that something that we want to look at as a council to perhaps get more members on that committee? And then additionally, the last item was they identified need for language change in 2.17060 Powers and Duties, and there is reference to the community, the Fairview Community Arts Council. So they recommended that that language be removed. So that would take an ordinance, an ordinance change, so. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have three brief things. I had a meeting with the Chief Deputy for Corrections from the Sheriff's Office, talking about the holding facility, the use of Inverness Jail potentially, and I was able, of course, I, back in the day, I had worked with these gentlemen, and I, so I had an understanding of what the issues were, the costs, and the potential, and it's not something that one has to like, but it just is what it is. It's very unfortunate. I think that the, I guess the only answer would be is if the county in itself decides to prioritize the holding facility. They do verbalize it, but I'm not sure how much juice they're putting behind it, particularly with the financial issues. The other thing is, on the 8th, I'll be attending the Small Cities Consortium. This is part of the Greater Portland Inc. Everything I've heard is that this is a good organization for really getting things done to bring business in. I continue to be disappointed with East Metro Economic Alliance and the fact that it is, there's not one business on the board that is associated with, from any of the small cities. It's all Gresham. And I think it's really important that this happen, and I have seen nothing other than some, a few comments made saying it's kind of, I wish it were that way. With that, I have nothing else. Next is presentations, and I see none. So, number seven is council business and public hearings. And Sam, the first thing is the Girl Scout Fee Waiver.
Yeah, I have two fee waivers currently in, being considered. One of them is for the Girl Scout troop to utilize the community center. The other one is the ongoing, we were deferring a decision on the fee waiver for the farmer's market. They did pay their temporary use fee, so this would be for the right-of-way, the, you know, the other permits that are associated with that event. What I'm asking from council is not to defer a decision on those items and to continue the, allow the use, so allow the farmer's market to continue. Also, grant in the interim the use of the community center to the Girl Scout troop with the waiving of their deposit until the council adopts that formal policy for the use of the community center, as well as for our special events. I have updated the initial policy, which council reviewed, I believe, at the last work session, and that is scheduled to come before you on May 15th. Included in that is some proposals that we have drafted for the use of City Hall, as well as the community center. Again, trying to encourage and give council an opportunity to support those groups that you are supportive of. But, rather than making those decisions here, I'm asking for council to allow the use pending that final decision in implementation of a policy on those issues. And I would anticipate we would review that in work session on the 15th with a potential adoption at that first meeting in June, absolutely no later than mid-June.
So do you need a motion?
I would need a motion to go ahead and do those things.
Do I hear such?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd make a motion to grant a fee waiver request, can we just say for the next 60 days or until we develop a policy?
Perfect.
For the Girl Scouts' use of the community center and the farmer's market to utilize the space out here.
Second, moving to second, any discussion? Okay, I've seen none. All those in favor, seeing if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Right, correct. So it is six to one, one extension. And you, please give state your reason for extension.
Well, I have no financial gain in the Girl Scouts. I do have an association with the Girl Scouts, so I just wanted to make that known, that I'm associated with Scouts.
Okay.
Thank you. We have to do that for the minutes according to the rules.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, do everything by the numbers here. Okay, I M.C., Fairview Doc Standards, Ordinance 1-2013. So, could we have the, we have the reading by the city recorder, or the second reading?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fairview in Fairview, Oregon, amending Fairview Municipal Code, Chapters 19.106 Natural Resource Regulations and 19.490 Miscellaneous Permits to Regulate and Require Fairview Lake Doc Permits.
Okay, here's any additional information or reporting by the administration?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council at this point? Okay, as such, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to state an objection to this ordinance? If such, please come up and give your name and address. Okay, seeing none. Anyone who supports this ordinance, the same thing, name and address, ordinance. Anyone who has anything to say about the ordinance at all? Okay, public hearing is closed. So, any questions from the council? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Ordinance 1-2013.
Now, here's second. Second. Okay, and so Counsel Barton Mullins has moved, and Counsel Prong has seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, seeing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It has passed. Love that. Okay, next is the Fairview Dock, excuse me, Fairview Lake Dock application fee, and that is Resolution 23-2013. Alan?
When in fact, I'm also listening and...
Oh, yeah. You could run up here and push the button for the air conditioning again. Oh, no, I'm kidding.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The resolution before you tonight establishes a fee for the dock permit. The new resolution before you tonight is for this fee regarding Ordinance 1, 2013, for the new dock standards. Prior to this ordinance, docks were regulated under the natural resource permit standards. So a natural permit, a natural resource permit was required. So with these new standards, there's the development of a new dock permit. And with this new permit process, the approval criteria are much more specific to docks, and therefore the review process can be more streamlined than that for the natural resource permit. These permits will be reviewed with a type-two process. So this new permit would, is recommended to be $250 as opposed to $300, which is the price for a type-two natural resource permit. So just briefly, the steps that staff goes through when reviewing a dock permit would be the permit intake, completeness review, the initial inspection at the property with the property owner, taking a look at where the dock is proposed to be placed, and then a code review for compliance with all of the applicable standards, writing the tentative notice of decision, sending that out to all property owners within 100 feet of the subject property, and then a final inspection if no appeal is filed. So there is quite a bit of staff time that goes into reviewing each of these dock permits. So even though it is a bit more streamlined, there's a good amount of staff time and administrative overhead that goes into reviewing these permits. So based on, just kind of a review of how much staff time is put into these permits, $250 was, we take to that number as a reasonable amount for this permit. So that's just a quick review of this resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel Prong.
Just to confirm, this is in lieu of the natural resources permit?
Exactly. It's a completely new permit, so it takes the docks out of the natural resource section of the code and establishes a whole new permit process just specifically for docks on Fairview Lake.
Okay. Counsel Quimby.
Did I hear you write in that the net benefit for the citizens wanting a dock is now $50 cheaper?
Yes.
Sounds like a win to me.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, seen it. Well, thank you very much. All right. Welcome to the warmth of City Hall. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 23-2013.
Second.
Moving to second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before you vote on it, because it is a new fee under state law, you just have to allow public comment when you institute a new fee, even though it's going to be a lower amount. So can you just open it up?
Sure. Okay, I'll open this up to comments. Does anyone like to comment either for or against, or just because they haven't said anything at a council meeting? Nothing. All right. Thank you. Her comment is closed. So it's been moved to second, and to get those, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It has passed unanimously. All right, moving on. Next is the pretreatment. If we can get, if we could have, so you record a first reading of this? And we have a staff report.
An ordinance of the Fairview City Council amending Chapter 13.25 Industrial Wastewater Pretreatment Program of the Fairview Municipal Code.
Okay, staff? Yes, Alan?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a pretty straightforward ordinance. As you know, we send wastewater to the City of Gresham. One of the requirements that industrial discharges after harvest to limit heavy metals, such chemicals, it's mandated by DQ EPA. Part of the agreement that we have with Gresham is that when Gresham modify their regulations, we will adopt them into our code by ordinance, and that's what this reflects.
Any questions? Nothing, nothing else? Okay, no questions? Then we'll move on. Thank you very much, and we'll take this up at the next meeting. Okay, go ahead, Alan. You can push it.
You have to hold it for two seconds. I like it.
I guess that we're going to get that contractor back here again, aren't we?
Yeah, I guess I spoke too soon.
Yeah. God, I hope we didn't pay the bill, did we? Oh, okay.
We're adjusting the temperature, we schedule the temperatures, and when, that's our first really sunny day, so we had a lot of heat come in off these windows all day today. We can have the windows shut, so I apologize.
Okay, item F, request for sale of unused property on which release to drive.
Mayor and council, we have, the city has received a request from a Mr. Hood of Hood Custom Homes, asking for, to purchase a 25-square-foot piece of property adjacent to his personal property, that he desires to build a home on this piece. I ran, I did take this, this offer was originally presented to Mr. Hood back in 2007. That offer, according to the documents that we've been able to find, termed in 2008. We have approached the city attorney to determine what procedures we would need to go through in order to pursue releasing this property from city ownership or selling it to a personal property owner. In that process, we do need to, in order to pursue it, we would need to get evaluation or an estimate of the market value of that piece of property, and then we would need to determine the cost associated with that. There is subsequent to that, should Mr. Hood still desire to purchase the property, we would need to do a formal notification process in the paper as well as hold a public hearing. So what we are looking for is a motion from council to direct staff to begin gathering that data in order to bring back to you for consideration. Not asking for it to say yes, that we will sell it, but for us to gather the information on...
So you like a motion? So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good. The last thing is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Class like to come up and get autographs, or take a look at the button system, take a look at our button system up here? How we, no one raises their hands?
Yeah, I'm like, I was sitting here writing a motion for that.